Twenty twenty six, it is seven oh five and I call the city council meeting to order. Debbie, will you please follow?
Here.
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 This evening, we are welcoming Kechai resident Doug Wodan, who's a pastor of Grace Connection Church in Valley Center, to lead an invocation. I ask that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to follow.
I have a question. Will my prayer be this open stuff?
Absolutely.
I should have wrote it out. Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day, and I hope we were able to rejoice and be glad in it. I thank you for everyone that is represented here, from the citizens, law enforcement, city staff, and council. Lord, it's a privilege to live in a free country, but with privilege comes responsibilities. I ask you just give wisdom. You say if we need wisdom, we just ask you, you'll give it to us liberally. And I know as a pastor, when you try to work things out, you have people pulling you from all sides, everybody knows what's best. And so ask for wisdom tonight, and as long as they serve, that they would do what is right, not only in their eyes, but in the eyes of the community, and most importantly, in the eyes of you. And I was thinking today, with this snow coming, whether it's four inches or forty inches, we don't know. But when I pray, I just reminded what Isaiah wrote, "Though your sins be as scarlet, they shall be white as snow." And I know the snow is refreshing, it's beautiful to look at, and even in our desperate situation, we're all sinners, we make mistakes. Because of what your son did for us on the cross, we can be pure and white as snow. So may everything we do here be for your honor and glory. Again, give wisdom to everybody that makes these decisions. And again, thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name we pray, and everyone says.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, we want to approval of agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda this evening?
I would just say, under approve, or to the agenda, no, I'm sorry.
Nothing from the agenda?
Nothing.
Okay, do we have an executive session this evening? Okay, we'll strike number twelve. I would entertain a motion.
I know that we have, or we have heard the agenda.
Striking number twelve?
Yes, okay, let's strike number twelve.
Second.
Motion by council member Moreland, second by council president Headstrom. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Moving on to approval of consent agenda. Council, are there any items that you want pulled from the consent agenda for discussion?
Item C was not received.
Yeah, I would, that's what I was gonna comment before, that is just kind of a placeholder until we get those revised reports from our financial advisor.
Okay.
So we're just gonna leave that on there for now?
Yeah, that's why I just have ten new revised documents on there, so it's a placeholder, so we don't forget it. We can re-put it or leave it there.
Yeah, I would, I would remove it for the approval, but then, yes, therefore, we're not gonna get that.
I know that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Second.
Motion by council member Moreland, second by council member Brewer. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Moving on to the communications section, do we have any Kechai civic groups or committees tonight to speak? Okay. Okay.
The Kechai committee met last week, and we are still looking for volunteer members. So if you have some time that you wanna donate, so that we can have a fair wish year, we're looking for members. We meet on the third Thursday of the month, at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Moving on to community announcements, we have a special presentation this evening by Kenley Zaring, the Cedric County Chief Deputy Register of Deeds. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. My name is Kenley Zaring, I'm the chief deputy for the Cedric County Register of Deeds. I'm just here to talk briefly about property fraud and notary fraud, and why our office has these tools to address those. Fraud is related to property and notarization often goes unnoticed until it becomes a serious problem. And our focus at the Register of Deeds office is early awareness and prevention through information. So right now, we have two free alert programs.
Let me just advance a point. There we go.
Thank you. So with the property fraud alert, basically, a property owner would just sign in with their name. And anytime anything was recorded under their name, they would get a notification via email, phone call, or text. And it would tell them the type of document that was filed in our office and the date that it was filed. Most of the time, it's, you know, either they bought or sold their house, or they paid off their mortgage. And it's something that, you know, they can look at if they're not sure if it's something they're familiar with. They can call our office and take, we can take a look at it. If it happens to be a fraud, then we would turn them over to the law enforcement and to file a case. Notary fraud also is very similar to the property fraud, but it's for the actual notaries. So if they notarize a document, real estate document, it's filed in our office, they'll get that same type of notification. And they can view it with their log and make sure that it's legitimate. And same thing, if it's fraudulent, then they can notify the, you know, their legal and law enforcement to file a case. That is seeming to be the biggest trend right now, is we're seeing fraudsters copy and paste the notary's log and throw it onto another document. And this, this tool will actually help that notary verify that. And same process, they call our office, we can look up the actual document and make sure that's legitimate. We've even seen them go as far as, you know, you can go on Amazon and get a notary stamp anytime. And they don't really go through much training, so it does happen. So it's very important to keep that log, so that you have that. But I need your guys' help to spread that word about these free programs. So I'm sure you guys are familiar with like Home Title Lock. This is just like that, but it's for free, so. But yeah, I also gave you a few pamphlets, because a lot of people don't know what the Register of Deeds office does. And, you know, basically, we're the file cabinet for all real estate documents that are, you know, coming through the county. So if you buy or sell your home, you know, you pay off your mortgage, those come through our office, we file them, and it's on record. We also offer the passport program, so you can come and actually make an appointment online, and we'll help you right away. We also have our military, veteran and military discount program. We created that just to let people know that the Register of Deeds office can file the veterans and military discharge papers in our office for free, and we can do five free certified copies at any time. What else? With the property fraud, they seem to be targeting a lot of people that have just paid off their mortgage, and also the elderly, so keep an eye out for those. And I highly recommend just signing up for it, it takes like a minute or two to get in there. And then on our next slide is just our contact information, you can call us anytime, and our staff can help you. Did you guys have any questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. Does anyone have any?
I just have a question, just a comment. I've been at Dover for years, and I filed documents with the office all the time. It never occurred to me that someone would copy a deed that's already been filed, it's still kind of a scandal. So I love this, I'm gonna share it with my office, so.
Yeah, I think it's hard with anyone that is a notary. Not a lot of people, they're the first in Kansas, the first county, so. That's where the guinea pig.
Thank you for coming out this evening, I really appreciate it, this is great information shared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before I go on with community announcements, council, does anyone have any community announcements that they would like to make?
I guess my after what we heard earlier about the city clerk purging the list of notification, I guess, how's that? I know that, I was told at one point that we did it annually, is that correct? Okay, so that kind of surprised me, because for years, we just kept it going. So just to kind of make sure that those of you who weren't here for that meeting, if you are somebody who wants to be on the notification list for when there are special meetings called, whether it's for the planning commission, the park board, or city council, make sure that the city clerk has your updated contact information, so that you can be contacted in the event that there is a special meeting and you are interested. Because I know even though they put it out on Facebook or a city website, you might not see those. So if you do wanna be included in that list, give it to the city clerk.
Thank you for that. Okay, I have a few announcements for the community. The Kechai United Methodist Church continues to offer their community dinner meal every Tuesday night from five thirty to seven thirty. I've heard from several residents who are enjoying gathering with others to share a meal and conversation, so go check it out. We all know that we have a winter storm warning beginning at noon on Friday, the twenty-third, through Sunday, the twenty-fifth, with snow and bitter temps expected. Please be prepared. For more information, please visit cedriccounty.org/emergency-management/click on Be Prepared. I also encourage residents to sign up for their civic ready alerts too, that's on that same web address. For Kechai locals, stay tuned to Kechai Police Department's Facebook page and the City of Kechai Facebook pages for public safety and city alerts should they arise. And if it snows, please help our public works department by moving your cars off the street to assist with their road plowing when that happens. We so appreciate when you do that. And please check on your neighbors, stay warm and safe this weekend. Next, a new opportunity coming up, let's talk about it, Kechai. This will be opportunity for a conversation with the mayor and up to two city council members, beginning February twelfth, twenty twenty-six, from six to six forty-five PM here in council chambers. Drop in, ask questions, share concerns. The plan is for this time to be a regularly scheduled time prior to each city council meeting on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. We'd love to have you join the city council meeting at seven PM afterwards. A new project I'm kicking off as mayor is the Pledge of Allegiance project for the City of Kechai, city council meetings. This is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the United States of America this year. As mayor, I wanted to do something to celebrate, as well as involve our youth, so this is a youth-focused opportunity. City council meetings, again, are held the second and fourth Thursdays at seven, so I'm inviting our Kechai youth who live here, or your grandparents, or your auntie, or your uncle live in Kechai and you visit here. Whether a young person would like to sign up to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at a city council meeting by themselves, with their siblings, their friend group, neighbors, or they're part of a scout troop, homeschool group, choir, you name it. Or you visit your grandparents, council member Brewer, or other relatives, and you want to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I invite you to sign up and come do just that. Youth will be free to leave following the Pledge of Allegiance, they are also welcome to stay if so desired to experience a city council meeting. Anyone interested can contact Mayor Johnny Harris at jharris@kechaiks.gov. January twenty-ninth is Kansas Day, which commemorates the day Kansas officially became the thirty-fourth, thirty-fourth state of the United States in eighteen sixty-one. The Kechai Park Board will meet February second, twenty twenty-six, at six PM in council chambers. And February fifth, twenty twenty-six, from five to seven PM, is the first public open house regarding K two fifty-four, focusing on Rock, Webb, and Greenwich. The meetings will be held at Northeast Magna High School, which is at five 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 zero North Lycée in Bel Air. Come hear what is being considered and give your input. And that ends all of the community announcements that I have for this evening. Anyone have any last comments they wanna add? Okay, moving on to public comment. Do we have public comment tonight, Debbie? Shelby Collins. Shelby Collins, welcome, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and then you have your time to share.
My name is Shelby Collins, I live at five two one Deerfield Circle in Valley Center, Kansas. Can I go ahead?
Yep, go right ahead.
Good evening, council members and residents of Kechai. Again, my name is Shelby. Even though I'm not a resident of Kechai, I drive through here every day on my way to work. I stop here often to visit friends, and I shop at one of my favorite places, Valley Floral Greenhouse. I care about this community, not as just as someone who passes through, but as someone who supports local businesses and visits this city regularly. I'm also a professor at the School of Criminal Justice at Wichita State University, and I teach future law enforcement professionals. Many of my students hope to work for agencies like the KBI, the FBI, and local departments across Kansas. One of the core topics I teach is ethics and professionalism, including how they should conduct themselves on social media if they want to build trust and advance in their careers. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm concerned about the tone and content of the Kechai Police Department's official Facebook posts, many of which are authored by the chief of police. These posts frequently mock suspects, use sarcastic nicknames, and include memes or AI-generated images that ridicule, sorry, ridicule individuals or citizens who ask questions. In one case, the chief posted a selfie with a suspect, in others, he used humors in ways that blur lines between public safety communication and entertainment. Posts like these aren't just unprofessional, they create real liability for the city. And research shows this isn't a subjective concern, but a documented risk in law enforcement. This isn't about whether humor is allowed, it's about whether the official voice of a police department should be used to belittle people, dismiss community concerns, or portray arrests as jokes. When law enforcement communicates this way, it affects public trust, it affects how young people view the profession. It affects how future officers, like the students I teach, understand what professionalism looks like, and it affects how the community sees the department that is sworn to serve them. Across the country, we've seen how unprofessional online behavior by law enforcement can create real consequences for criminal cases and for public trust. For example, in the Karen Reed murder trial, investigators and appropriate messages became public and were used to challenge his credibility in court. In Philadelphia, a major review of officer's social media posts revealed derogatory content, forcing prosecutors to reevaluate cases, because those officers could no longer testify. In a twenty twenty-three national analysis of police social media scandals, including one from Wichita, showed that when departments use humor, memes, or mocking language online, it often leads to disciplinary action, damage community relationships, and questions about the integrity of investigations. These examples, sorry, these examples demonstrate that what officers post online doesn't stay online. It can undermine cases, weaken testimony, and erode public's confidence in the entire department. So I'm asking you, the members of the city council, to review the department's social media practices. Consider whether the current tone reflects the values of Kechai, and ask whether the style of communication builds trust or rods it. I'm not here to attack anyone, I'm here because I care about this community, I care about the profession, and I care about the example we set for the next generation of officers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shelby, for being willing to come and share. Council, would any of you like to respond?
I actually have
Is it a P about response?
Yes, sir, we'll allow you to do that.
I guess I actually, I have this on my, for my discussion later, but since you came. I, I did wonder, is there, does the city actually have a policy or guidelines that we follow for Facebook to maintain that professional, to maintain professionalism? And if, if we don't, do we need to have one?
Is that a question for me?
Yes, that's a question.
Yeah, currently, the city does not. We have a new personnel policy manual that does have that in it. It hasn't been brought to council yet for approval, it's still, it's been through Andrew's office. He's looked at it, staff's going to review it again, so it will come to council. It does have social media policies in it.
Any other counsel?
I would just share that I too have expressed my concerns. I understand that the police department likes to use humor, I do think there's a line that can be crossed. I would align very much with what you've said, I've become very concerned. I was thankful, like, the last day or so, it felt like it calmed down just a little bit. I do think this is definitely a discussion that we need to have as a council, what is appropriate and what is not, and how we desire to be presenting ourselves in all of our departments as the City of Kechai. So, chief?
Yes, may I take the podium?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes.
I have had other comments from people both in and out of the city on that very topic. They weren't usually just one-time comments, things like that, but I have heard that from other people as well.
So I've been prepared for this as well, fear of this coming, you know, you got contacts to reach out to. So I'm bringing this up. Since adding humor to the posts and so on, I'm just gonna give you some quick statistics, we're off the cuff here. We're about four thousand two hundred twenty-seven followers, we average about a hundred and six thousand engagements. And in the last week, we've had one point zero eight three million views, which is about one-third of the state of Kansas population. Here's the deal, sharing the photographs of suspects, we will continue to do that, because that is what raises awareness in this city. When we have a criminal who's running through backyards, who is stealing cars, who is burglarizing buildings, it's vital that people have those photographs and have that information. And I will continue to use humor to do so. Why? Because it gets shared. You've noticed the Facebook posts, you've looked at the shares, you've looked at the views, the ones that are mild, which are just mostly imporri, don't have the same outreach that they do when you add humor to them. My job is to protect the city, I'm the gatekeeper of this city, and I take that job very seriously, excuse me. Kechai, your police department has a spine now. We're not afraid of criminal element, we're not afraid to put their faces on Facebook. You come to Kechai, you commit crime, we will make you famous. That will happen, your face will be on Facebook. You come here and victimize the citizens that I'm in charge of keeping safe, I will make sure that however many views see your face. And that's what it is. I will not back down from that. Feelings are not facts. I'm sorry if your feelings are hurt by what you see on Facebook, but they're not facts. It is what it is. Currently, multiple, 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 probably all police departments share suspects' faces, images, wherever it is. The particular video that she, or the picture that she is talking about, was after about a four-hour book chase with that suspect, and we finally did catch him with a K nine. I reshared that same picture from October. That wasn't a current catch, that was from October. That's because we caught him out here on two fifty-four, coming into town with another stolen vehicle. You guys gotta understand how this works, they don't stop stealing vehicles, they trade them out for other vehicles. So if you want the communities of Kechai to be safe, if you want your car stolen in your driveway, the morning you wake up, let us do our jobs. Let us do our jobs, because that's what we're here to do. In the last week, I received a hundred and thirty-seven private messages to the Facebook page, telling us that they enjoy what we're doing, they appreciate what we're doing, and are happy that their community is safe again. You can call request those, you can read through every one of them, I can print them off, it's not a problem, okay? It's there. Read through the positive comments. By far, they outweigh the negative. If you're sensitive about the Facebook page of Kansas Police Department, or Kechai Kansas Police Department, scroll past it. Scroll past it, you don't have to look at it, you don't have to read it, move on. My last comment, my last statement, when you two fix your moral compass, then you can try to fix mine, and you know exactly what I'm talking about, okay? You know exactly what I'm talking about, you and you. Don't look at me like that, I've seen the call requests, I've seen the people that you talk to, okay? I know what's going on. Fix your compasses, then you worry about mine. That's all.
Chief, one of the things I would just request is that, just because somebody doesn't agree with you, they don't have to be labeled as haters.
It is not that.
We can have differences of opinions, and that's one of the things that people are concerned, they can't even state that it bothers them.
I bought bagels this morning to meet with a person who disagreed with me. You can see the arrangement made on the Facebook page. He must have come to my office, we were gonna sit down, have coffee, and share bagels. He didn't show up. I was gonna have that conversation. I'm not mad at her, I'm not mad at her at all. I'm mad at you two, for sure, but she's, she's just expressing an opinion. My job is, is the bottom line is to protect this city. Take a look at this vest, Mayor, you accused me of not being working chief, all right? Remember that? I remember that conversation. These are magazines for my weapon, this is a new magazine for my carbine, this is a knife, okay? Handcuffs, body camera. Everything I'm wearing is designed to either protect me, take freedom, or hurt somebody else. So when you're ready to take on that responsibility and step in here and see what the real world looks like, that's when you can use Scott's name to further your campaign, to further your agenda. What did you do for his family? Let me ask you that, Mayor. What did you do for Scott's family before you put him in that email to talk to me about what sacrifice looks like?
I was concerned about the content.
What did you do for Scott's family before you used it? Did you do anything? I'll tell you what I did. I hugged his widow when she came to pick up his, his remains down here in Wichita at the forensic center. I escorted his wife and his kids under the KHB helicopter back to his home in Hayes, Kansas. I attended his funeral. I hugged his lieutenant, and I know his sergeant, and I know him. So when you use his family as an example and you have no clue about what you're talking about, now you're making my blood boil. I'm not gonna stand for it, Mayor. I'm not gonna stand for it. And I'll stand at that podium, and I will stand up for the fallen, I know what sacrifice looks like, I know what generational law enforcement looks like. My son's wearing the badge right now. So don't you dare ever use the name of our fallen again, until you do something for them.
You have definitely made yourself very clear in this meeting, and I appreciate it. I appreciate being threatened as a public official.
Was no threat, not a single one.
Is there anyone else for public forum? Okay, we'll close public forum. Moving on to new business, twenty twenty-six patrol car purchase approval, city administrator Jensen.
Mayor and council, before you is the budgeted patrol car replacement for twenty twenty-six. Very similar to what you saw last month, last month was a replacement for a car that had been wrecked, that somebody ran into and so forth, so we replaced it. This is our budgeted replacement, and this is approval to purchase the car. The car has not been purchased yet, we need approval so they can go ahead and build it. It was built into the twenty twenty-six budget, and that's what's before you.
Council, any questions or discussion?
Is this a replacement for another vehicle? Is another vehicle being sold, traded in, anything of that nature?
This is a vehicle that's scheduled to be replaced or put back on the road, twenty eighteen is being mothballed, so it's taking the place of it. Twenty twenty-three is the one that we replaced with, you and Mr. Jensen.
Okay, my question was based on the capital improvement plan that was approved that said in twenty twenty-five, the twenty eighteen was gonna be mothballed or was going to be traded in, and the twenty twenty was going to be replaced. My question is, what is happening to those vehicles?
Yeah, just as we talked about this last meeting.
No, I didn't get an answer last meeting, you told us we were talking about it at this meeting.
Twenty
The twenty eighteen is that was mothballed.
Twenty eighteen had, we had anticipated replacing it, put more money into it, ended up putting new motor in it, so we had kept it until this car is replaced, we're retaining that car. But as chief explained, pulling it offline as kind of a spare car, so if another vehicle weighs down, then we can, the officers can use it. And then we will eventually get rid of that vehicle, so this, this was essentially to replace that vehicle.
So this is the twenty, if, twenty eighteen and not the twenty twenty as stated, so the twenty twenty we're just keeping?
Twenty twenty was never discussed, only being replaced, this is.
Twenty twenty was never discussed when we were being replaced. This is.
All due respect, I have a document that was presented to council that was approved by council that says it was. I am asking for clarification.
Yeah, that was, that was from one of our budget workshops. Yeah, that document that you have there was from a PowerPoint from one of our workshops.
But this is not the CIP that was actually approved?
No, this purchase was approved in the twenty twenty-six budget.
Is this the approved CIP?
I cannot see it. I'd have to look.
So this was the, this was what was presented in the budget presentation in August, August fourteenth? Is that what was approved, or was there changes after that?
I cannot see your document here, but I will be happy to check to see if that's the most recent copy.
I asked last time, and you told me that, that, that there had not been any changes, so that's why it wasn't updated.
Teresa, I can bring it back to you at the next meeting.
So how many, so this will make then the sixth vehicle that we currently have? Because we're not trading in a vehicle, we're just adding to our fleet.
Eighteen will not be traded in. Eighteen will be sold on Purple Wave once we've established a solid foundation with our, our fleet. Right now, we don't have that, so eighteen's being mothballed. Once we establish a solid foundation, eighteen will be sold on Purple Wave. Twenty will remain in service, even though it's got ninety-some thousand miles on it. And then at the time of the replace, the next vehicle, twenty, will then be the same thing that eighteen is doing.
So after, that's what, that's where I'm trying to clarify. So after this vehicle comes on and is usable, then we do intend to sell the twenty eighteen?
Yes, as long as the other brother vehicles stay.
So it's just that the plan that we had presented was basically one vehicle off. So there wasn't a vehicle traded in in twenty twenty-five, and the plan wasn't shown as being updated, so I'm just trying to make sure that I'm aware of. Because I've had people ask me how many vehicles we have, what's our intention, and so that's where, where my questions come from.
So you're saying the twenty eighteen comes off once the new one comes on, correct? But it doesn't come off until we have a patrol car ready.
Yeah, just like Chief said.
And then Purple Wave, generally we get.
Purple Wave is a government auction site, so most police departments are, not just police departments, but municipalities put their vehicles on there and they kind of.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what we usually get for.
Yeah, while that, while that car has a new engine in it, it's still not reliable. The new engine will increase the value of that car on Purple Wave. I would expect to be around the ten thousand dollar mark on that car.
Okay, that's true.
Chief, which, what was the vehicle that was hit?
Twenty twenty-three target.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Vehicle replacement plans are great until you have like a vehicle in an accident that gets totaled and it throws the whole thing off.
Counsel, is there any further discussion or questions?
I have this down for discussions later because I did have a couple residents ask me some questions specifically about police cars. It doesn't really as much have to do with the acquisition of the new car, so I didn't know if you want me to ask them now while we're talking about police cars or wait until later when we're doing open discussion.
Well, I'll try to answer whatever I can.
So one of the questions that I was asked, so how many cars, and I do have an answer to that. How many vehicles are regularly taken home from the police department? How many? Is it just yours? Okay. I, I told them I wasn't sure. I knew that you took yours. I did not believe there was any others because that was what one was. Do we have any idea? I know you said the twenty twenty has ninety thousand miles on it. Do we have an estimate on how much we average put on vehicles per year?
Usually it's around twelve thousand miles per vehicle.
And Sir, Chief, could you repeat that? I have a question. Twelve thousand per vehicle typically, per year, per vehicle.
And then I know that when you bought your original car, when it first came on, that that was an unmarked car, and now we have the truck. Are those, so do we have two unmarked vehicles, or has the other one that you previously used, is that now a marked vehicle? Does it have the logo on the side?
Twenty-three is the one that totaled. It was the one I previously used.
Okay, so.
So it was not one.
So it was not marked. Okay, so now we're back to one that would, okay.
Yes.
All right, those were the questions that I've been asked. Thank you.
If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-six patrol vehicle from served in the amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand dollars as allocated for in the approved twenty twenty-six budget.
Second. Motion by Council President Hestram, second by Council Member Baldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, moving on to council reports and discussion. Are there any council reports? Any points of discussion?
I just, I guess I, I have one. I know that at the December meeting, we had the holiday resolution. And then on the holidays, I noticed that the city hall was closed an extra half-day, both before Christmas and before New Year. Was, so is that part, should that be part of the holiday resolution if we plan on closing? Or were, was staff given holiday pay for that, or was it just a four-hour day?
Yeah, historically, the city has always closed early.
I, I think historic is.
Historically, the city has always closed.
When you say historic, how many years do you mean? Because historically, I didn't until, until probably the last three years. I don't think that was. But what I'm asking is, if that's going to be holiday pay, then is that something that needs to go through council? If that is something that is going to be a standard practice moving forward?
What do you mean by holiday pay?
What, so when, when the city hall was closed on the day before the year, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve?
So you're asking if employees get paid time and half for that?
No, were the, were the employees that were, did not work, did they receive holiday pay, or were they paid for that additional four hours?
I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can find out. I don't. They were paid for the four hours.
And was it, so if they were paid for the four hours, they had off where it was, that was in the offices, and I'm, I'm not sure if the public works was included in that? Were police officers rewarded with that same?
Police officers, so that's, they have to work twenty-four hours.
Okay, so that's kind of what I'm getting at, because we had two departments who received holiday pay, additional holiday pay than what was in the holiday resolution, and we had one department that was not. So if that is going to be the standard practice moving forward, I'm just asking, first off, for clarification that, because I honestly came in, was coming up to city hall for something New Year's Eve, not realizing that, because I didn't see it on the website, that we were closing early. So it just is something that, if it is some, a benefit that we're going to give to the, to the staff, does it need to be formalized? That's just my, my question. Discussion.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I had a resident inquire, why are we charged stormwater fees? Any from staff, let me give an answer for that?
Well, stormwater fees is they apply to runoff from impervious surfaces.
It's what's in their utility bills, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, what's in the utility bill? Yeah, that's, that's stormwater utility.
Yeah, by ordinance.
Okay.
It's by ordinance, depending on how many square feet of impervious surface you have.
And is that the city that's charging it, or is that a state of Kansas requirement?
City.
Okay, so the secondary question to that was if their property is more rural, but inside the city limits of Ketchikan, and they don't believe that their property impacts stormwater issues, why do they have to pay stormwater fees?
Well, stormwater would be defined as anything that runs off into the ditches. So any, any property drains to the ditches, and those ditches have to be maintained by the city. The city has to, you know, pay for that. We incur maintenance costs for those, so that's what those stormwater fees cover.
Thank you for that. My next point of discussion may go between discussion and request. I'm not really sure how it's going to fall out, so I'll just bring it forward. This is a playground discussion. First off, I want to say that I am thankful for every person on the park board and the investment of their time to move the playground equipment project forward. I support replacing our playground equipment. My inquiry and discussion is about the procedure. I asked a question about the playground equipment plan at the January eighth, twenty twenty-six city council meeting. The park board is an advisory board, and City Administrator Jensen stated that the board would bring forward information to the council when they made a decision. An advisory board is not a decision-making board. From my perspective and looking at city procedures, as an advisory board, the park board would have brought through bids and plans forward as an agenda item for the city council with their recommendation with those. And after hearing the options available and cost, and possibly presentations to the council, just like we did with the new electronic city sign placement considerations, the city council will then decide which option would be approved. If there was a desire for an exception to procedure, that would have been presented to the city council to make a determination, yes or no. There are already dates scheduled for the new playground build to occur in approximately five months, but the playground equipment has not been on an agenda, nor has the city council given approval for the project to move forward. Of the park budget for twenty twenty-six, what are the costs for maintenance and repairs that are needed at Ketchikan Park? That is also a factor of available funds. In addition, it's then stated that fundraising must be done, and there is the hope of grant awards. I am aware of all of the details. Yet, my greatest concern is procedure and then costs. There are finite public dollars available. In a time of rising costs and the heavy burden of property taxes spoken out by the residents who live here in Ketchikan, the governing body should carefully weigh what is best for Ketchikan as this significant investment is made. I desire the playground equipment project to be successful and for accountability and transparency to occur for the whole Ketchikan community. I'd like to have a discussion about the procedure, whether it's today or we schedule it for the next meeting, February twelfth, twenty twenty-six. It's three weeks until the next council meeting, and the clock is ticking on this project. How would you like to move forward? Would you like to have discussion now, or would you like it to be put onto the agenda for the next meeting?
Mayor, I think that's your call.
I would like to have a discussion about it, counsel. Would you like to have a discussion?
I'm, I'm curious, because I believe that there, was there not three proposals, three different people brought forth proposals initially when this came up? And I'm asking because I don't have access to the park board records. So there were three proposals.
Yes, yes.
So the park board heard the proposals, but we have heard none. We've had a public meeting that said this is what's happening. And this is when, I mean, there's, you told us that there's a, there's an expected build date, but we, we haven't seen anything. Nothing's come before the council. So.
Yeah, you're correct, and I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. Because as you know, the park board is still, well, in fact, today, and I haven't even had the chance to look through the quote that came back, but they got the final pricing in for the playground equipment.
From one company?
From Play by Design, who they have been working with, who's.
But that was never brought before the council to make a decision. There was three original bids from three different companies that never, the, the park board itself made a decision, but they're not a decision-making board. They are an advisory board, and so all of those bids should have come. We're talking a lot of money here. So that should have come to the city council, and the city council would have made the decision how they were proceeding with the project.
I don't know if I agree with you on that. We cast the park board to bring their recommendation to the city council. They did that through a lengthy interview process with different vendors. I think your catch, Mayor, is the sole source vendor.
It's not a sole source vendor.
Well, I, I know that's.
I have a list of twelve right here, other companies that do exactly the same thing that Play by Design does.
I, I understand that your opinion. You and I have exchanged emails on that.
Yes, we have.
Our, our purchase policy, yes, we, we have a purchase policy. And in certain search situations, it requires either RFP or three bids to move forward. And then we have provisions for a sole source vendor too, which Play by Design is a sole source vendor. Whether you agree or not, we can have that discussion later. But the fact is, we, we can go back quite some time when the city council was willing to make those decisions, and you were a citizen, and you were calling for a park board to be put together.
Correct.
To make those decisions.
No, to do the job of the park board.
Okay, so.
That's two different things.
So we reached out to volunteers, we.
Absolutely.
We enacted the park board that hadn't been together in many, many years, and that was their first task is to make a recommendation to the city council for this playground equipment. But now what I hear you saying is you don't agree with the decision that they made.
It's not a decision-making board, sir.
And they have, the, the park board has to make a decision.
They had three bids to bring forward to the council.
In order to make a recommendation for the city council.
So how, have they made a recommendation to the city council?
No, they have not.
Okay, so a decision has been made to move forward, but that decision did not come from this body?
There's been no, there's been no money in your contract.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing.
No decision has been made.
That's my confusion. There's no decision that's been made. They are going to make a recommendation to the city council based off the information that they gather. No contracts have been signed, no, no.
May I ask us to clarify? Has anything binding been there to the city?
No.
So we're still in a recommendation phase?
So when it comes to us, will that have three sources of recommendation, or are they only bringing us one source of recommendation?
They will be bringing Play by Design.
Why? Why is there only, why, when I look at sole source, it says certain ones may be, and it really is very vague. I will say on purchasing policy, sole source purchases may be made under the parameters established by this policy, but without competitive bids or quotes if determined by the city administrator that there is only one vendor that can reasonably provide the good service. How did you reasonably decide that that was the only vendor that could come to that service when the park board themselves found several people to reach out to, and then they among themselves decided which one would come forward to us? How did you decide that?
I think the important part is they interviewed those companies. They came in and did interviews with them and decided that the other companies did not provide the service that they wanted. This is a more specialized service specific to Ketchikan with the community involvement where they came out, they incorporated the community, they went to the local schools to develop this plan that's going to be recommended to the city council.
But that process there happened after they decided that this was going to be the only one that they brought forward, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just, I, I, you're telling me we got the cart before the horse, but I feel like there's a disconnect in the fact that, like I said, this is an advisory board, and if they went and searched out three bids, why wasn't the city council involved in vetting those three bids? Because it.
I don't think they needed to be.
Okay, but where was all.
Our park board has done an incredible job through this entire process.
So when, when they, when they reached out to the, to the companies, were all companies and all people that shared that information and were working with them, were they all given the exact same information to take to the respective companies to vet them out?
I don't have an answer for you for that.
They did not. They did not. I'll have the same answer at all those meetings.
I'll have, I'll have to ask the park board.
Okay, and, and again, like I said, we don't have access to the minutes of the meetings. Those aren't provided on the website, so it's hard for us to tell. But if the park board put it out to bid, and they requested proposals, so that means that there was a request for proposals. So they didn't see.
No, they never, they never had an RFP. They did it individually.
They, they didn't have.
They did not have anything.
They, what, they had it go out for proposals, but there is, we don't know if we're, again, comparing apples to apples, or we have apples and oranges, because we're not getting. or we have apples and oranges because we're not getting the information.
Like, I guess maybe one of the first things I would suggest, did you come to the park board and ask them those questions? Because they're the ones making those decisions.
And then, ma'am, I would request that once the park board brings us the recommendation, that the sole source justification is included in that.
It will be, yes.
And then I will also supply twelve other companies that do the same thing that Play By Design does.
Okay, and moving forward with that, I think that our language in our purchasing policy needs to be cleaned up as to what actually, because it does say that under the parameters established by this policy, but it doesn't really provide true parameters. And so when it says that it's determined by the city administrator and we have three companies that they went out to bid, but we didn't, so there, so it's hard for me to say that sole source if there weren't these three companies that they spoke to.
Who, who developed that policy?
The city, well, it was, it was, um, adopted on February tenth, twenty twenty two.
When you were finance director?
No, I was not.
Okay, or city clerk?
I was the city clerk, yeah. But thank you for trying.
My other concern is just the total cost of it. It would definitely fall under where we would have three bids. Um, and secondarily, um, when, just one example, when the Huffman sewer line needed to be scoped to find out what was going on for it, um, the city council at that time, um, it was quite the process of proving sole source provider because there was only one company in the entire U.S. that offered that service. And so to just say that a playground designer is sole source, um, I have a really hard time with that because there are so many playground designers throughout the United States. So that is just really concerning. And I got shut down at park board when I said, I don't believe that this falls under sole source. There are many other companies that do this. Um, at that time, I was told that it was because you had told them that it was sole source provider and that they were going to follow what you had told them. And if I had an issue, I needed to bring it up with you. So tonight, I am bringing it up in a public meeting because it's less than five months to a scheduled build date, whether they've signed something or not. And we haven't considered anything else. The council has made no decisions on how to move forward. So it's just really disappointing, the whole process. I think that you could say that the cart got put before the horse in the way that the park board ended up being led to develop the project. So it's just really disappointing. I really want a great outcome for this. Um, the other two people that got bids, it was completely different parameters on what they went out to find because they stayed within a certain price range. Um, and it's just a lot different. Um, I would hope that if it was an exception to what wanted to be done, that that would have been, the park board would have been advised to come to the council saying that they wanted to go well over what the original plan was for how much money to spend on playground equipment and ask for the council's decision whether they would support fundraising, trying to acquire grants, um, instead of it just being pushed through the way it was. So it's just my personal perspective.
I think our park board has done a wonderful job.
They have done, yes.
I, I think, I think the finished product that they will bring to the city council for considerations will be well-vetted, um, include tons of community input, um, and be a very good proposal.
Thank you. Council, any other reports or discussion? Okay, I'm gonna move on to governing body requests. Does anyone have any requests to bring forth tonight?
I would request a copy of the current personnel policy, including the salary and pay schedule with the grades and levels and job descriptions that have previously been adopted by council, so that when the, I guess the one that's in the works that I didn't, I was not aware of, um, that when we have that, that we can actually have a comparative piece of documentation.
Um, I brought this up last time about the Wichita water rates going up. Do, does the city have an estimated date for an update to water rates with Wichita's increase that began January first, twenty twenty six?
Just that's what you need to have it done by next month.
Something next year, July, then it goes up to February. Okay, um, when those are brought forward, I am requesting the city to please have a visual slide that shows current rates, what the new rate increase would be, as well as including the additional three percent escalation rate that will occur on August first, twenty twenty six, so that our residents can be aware of what is gonna be happening throughout this year. Um, an additional request, um, for transparency, this has been a discussion in the past that didn't really go anywhere, is the consideration of printing utility rates on our city bills. Um, a number of residents have asked for more transparency so they can actually see what they're being charged. And so if that's a council discussion, you guys had this discussion, um, several years ago. There were residents that were coming forward saying they didn't know what they were being charged. At that time, they added some rates onto the city website for a time, um, and I don't know if that is being kept up currently, um, particular rates.
Specifically, is not on there?
I don't think there's room on that bill to put the four.
That was the, the reason before why they weren't printing it on there?
It took me two weeks to get the P.O. box taken off.
There's no rates on the bill. There's no rates.
The gas rate changes monthly, so the, the per unit rate.
Per unit rate?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, it took me two weeks to get the P.O. box taken off because they didn't know how to do it.
Oh, boy.
So I'm sure you understand.
Yes.
Oh, I, yeah, because I know where it's at.
Yes, and maybe the consideration is if we can't put it on the bill for some reason, is that we create a spot on the city website where the rates are kept, are published every month, what the rates are because the gas rate does change every month.
That, and once we get the new sign, I'm sure can we put on the new sign?
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So my question just be, um, we do have the new rates that we do a visual slide so that people can see what their current rate was for water, what it's gonna be, and then what it will be August first, with the three percent escalation rate.
Thomas and I will have to sit down and.
Great.
That's in his ball.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Okay, uh, go ahead and do the mayoral report for this meeting. Uh, January tenth, twenty twenty six, I attended the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting. Council president Hestrom and city administrator Jensen also were in attendance. There was really good attendance across Sedgwick County at that meeting. Julie Stimson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management gave an insightful presentation regarding disaster recovery for a community after a major event occurs. The Andover tornado event was the example utilized. She stated that after a disaster, we don't go back to normal, but to a new normal, so our community is better prepared going forward. SCA was hosted by Valer and Walton's Meat Processing Supplier. They are the everything but the meat company. Um, their new building facility, um, is just fantastic. The family put a lot of thought into every detail from equipment testing, training, video production, streamlining inventory processes for order fulfillment, and including future expansion. The public can access their retail store on Fifty Third, just down the road a little bit, or visit their website. Um, one side note on that, with that company Walton's, Sedgwick County Elections Office will be relocating to the former Walton site after the building was purchased by Sedgwick County. Um, a special thank you to city staff who took care of the special meeting notices for two electronic city sign demonstrations, as well as attending the meetings and taking minutes, and to city council members for making time to attend as this governing body works towards replacement of our current city sign that is unable to have information changed on it. I so appreciate everyone's efforts involved in that. Uh, today, January twenty second, I attended the League of Kansas Municipalities' New Year, New Roles, What Every City Official Should Know webinar this morning. Key takeaways included knowing your role, respect boundaries, leave collaboratively, ask a lot of questions, and ask more questions, which everyone knows I love to ask questions. Um, discussion included elected officials and city staff roles and how to interact in a more effective way. The importance of continuing education for elected officials was very much highlighted. Utilizing time management tips when serving as an elected official, questions to ask as you build relationships, social media considerations, and more. I have much to learn and plan to invest in educational opportunities as they are made available through LKM and other organizations in my service to the people of Kechai. There's nothing else. Um, we'll move on to staff reports. Thomas Bevan, Public Works, please. Welcome.
Mayor, council, um, I think you have them before you, right?
Yep.
Uh, so I kinda did, since we wasn't here early November, December, I kinda did both of those together, and then I like to give a year-end review. Um, good thing is, is that it looks like we hired a couple of guys that are, at least can read a book and pass the test. Um, so we, four of us attended the, uh, backflow cross-connection, um, all four passed. That way the city stays in compliance with the city of Wichita. Um, we have to have our backflow and our cross-connection. Um, it's also a state requirement, just so, you know, um, nobody's sending anything back through the lines that their neighbor gets to drink. Um, nobody wants that for sure. Um, graded dirt roads in November, December, um, moisture's been kinda hard to get by, so if we get it, we try to get out there and get some of those, those, uh, holes dug out of there or get some of them windrows locked down. Um, we spent quite a bit of time cleaning ditches. I also, uh, we spent about three or four days updating the city's dent plan. Um, that plan is due every five years to the KCC, also sent to FMSA. What that does is it takes our gas lines in total, breaks them down and does a threat assessment from terrorism to earthquakes to, you know, just natural disasters to, um, how long our lines have been in, whether they're steel, whether they're poly, whether they've been coated, um, contractor hits, um, unfortunately, we're starting to see an uptick in, in contractor hits uh, before our barrier yard lines were the, the biggest threat. We did see a little rotation in the numbering on that. Um, I think we had three, three hits this year, so it takes longevity since it's been in since nineteen fifty seven, um, of all of it in total, and it just breaks it down in the algorithm. I don't know exactly how it does. Somebody smarter than me invented it, so I just put the numbers in. Um, we made ninety-five hundred gallons of, uh, brine, um, trying to get ahead of these winter events. I was hoping we wouldn't have any this year, but, uh, didn't knock on wood hard enough, I guess. So, uh, guys, if you're ready, they'll be putting out brines tomorrow afternoon, pre-treats, and I guess it's gonna drop, I don't know, like three inches or thirteen inches or twenty-three inches, I don't know. I should have been a meteorologist, so I could have been wrong ninety percent of the time, I guess, but I have a job. But, uh, we'll be pre-treating, uh, we'll probably come in Saturday night or Sunday early, early in the morning to start pushing. Um, I'm not sure we wanna be out there with everybody else driving around on Saturday. Um, we try to stay out of their way and get in here at night while everybody's sleeping if we see a higher amount accumulation, so it's gonna depend. I'll be paying attention to whatever radar I think is gonna be correct that next hour. Um, so I also did a breakdown for a year. We almost had eighteen hundred locates. To put that in perspective, that's more than we had the last two years combined. It's only a few hundred, less than we had the last three years. Um, keep, keep in the back of your mind that those locates are not ours. So those are the surrounding towns doing work around us. That's Wichita, that's Park City, anything that butts up adjacent to our utilities that could affect our utilities. So when we have these other divisions coming in, like maybe Cans or whatever, we're going to see an explosion of locates. So each locate takes about an hour. Some of them take longer. Um, currently, like, um, Sil Labs out there, when we locate that, that's almost three square miles, or by the time you locate the gas, come back, relocate the water, come back, rehook up, and we locate this, the sewer. So those, those take an extremely long time. Um, we, we ran out fifty-nine hundred tons of KGE rock up to Sunnydale to put on the roads, another three hundred tons of sand. Um, the hours are broke down on here. If you figure them all up, there's about seventy-five hundred hours that are accounted for on here. Um, with the summertime help, we only had about nine thousand hours. So that leaves fifteen hundred hours to do everything else in the city between all, between the guys that are here. And we all know that Earl retired, so his hours are out the window, so there's no way that I'm going to be able to do the same stuff. So obviously, we, we will hire eventually, I think, around April first, is when I'll try to start, have, hopefully have somebody hired to be ready for the summertime. Um, those fifteen hundred hours, you know, include picking up dead animals, going back out to read water, gas meters that might, you know, somebody might have thought the read was off, um, replacing water and gas meters. Um, uh, we just spent three days cleaning up the fair building, putting up shelves, um, shop backing the floor, um, cleaning the basement here, so things, that's what those fifteen hundred extra hours are for. Um, gas trains and, and certificates and state audits, about six hundred hours. So, um, you guys have any questions or?
I have a question for you because we're gonna get these questions. So with the storm of the year coming and everybody predicting different things, can you just share kinda what your snow removal priority is? Because people get confused as to Water County, Watt City, we share roads with Park City, we share roads with other municipalities. Kinda walk through what your snow removal plan is so that when we get those texts from our neighbors, we say, when's my snow gonna get around?
So me and I was actually talking about this earlier today. Since, since I've become public works director, we've taken on eight more miles of road to clear, to grade, to clean ditches. That's eighteen miles. That's actually sixteen road miles, but you gotta count both directions.
Right.
So, um, usually we try to take care of the main roads first. Uh, when I first started here, we didn't even clear the center of Kechai. The county came through and they would clear all of Oliver down to Fifty Third. They would clear all of, uh, Kechai Road all the way out to Woodlawn. They would clear Woodlawn over to Valer. Um, so now we do that. Um, then this year, um, the county asked us to take all the way to Seventy Seventh on, on Oliver, and then also Ninety Third to Hundred First on Hydraulics. Um, in my meeting with the mayor, when she kinda drove with me, I also, you know, I'm looking into the fact that I went thirty-five to Oliver. It's almost all Kechai now. Out to Elder, Elder's Lee's Farm, so I don't think it'll be very long before they drop that three miles on us. Um, yesterday, I purchased another plow for our skid steer to kinda help. Um, most of our plows are thirty years old, so we've, we've been beating them for as long as we can, fixing things for as long as we can. Um, we purchased one for our skid steer, uh, yesterday, an eight-foot blade, so hopefully that'll help, um, with a few more people on. But we always do the main roads first. So we'll head out towards Hillside, we'll come back into town, we'll head south towards Fifty Third and Oliver, and then out towards Woodlawn down Fifty Third. We just kinda make a circle. Um, hopefully the snow will stop and then we'll start hitting the neighborhoods and then the coldest sex. Um, Prairie Creek Drive gets hit because it's an emergency snow route, um, so we hit that one usually first before we start doing side roads. Uh, we've also had to talk about, we're one of the few cities left that still tr, that still does the residential neighborhoods. Um, in the past, I don't mind hitting them. It'd be nice if we could get the cars off the roads. It's, you know, it's kind of one of those things when you got new operators and they see those cars out there and then you look up there and there's not one car parked in the driveway. It's like, okay, well, then I get a call, hey, you buried my car in. Well, I'm sorry, um, but, you know, we didn't change it so far. We turned it the other direction and put more snow in your neighborhood yard. I don't, I, you know. And it's past this storm if we continue to do that for residential neighborhoods or not. I mean, that's not really my decision. That'll be your guys' decision. Um, because we also talked about the, uh, making brine. Um, if we purchase it, because we, we, we make it really slow, it took Jason four days to make ninety-five hundred gallons. Um, they have mixers and stuff, but we mix it outside in the weather, in the cold. We don't have a, you know, a fancy shop for that to be made in. Um, but some of these places are using almost two mils worth of brine, mill dollars, so you're talking forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars in brine. Um, the way we currently make it, we can do it for about twenty to forty cents. If you purchase it, it's about a dollar fifty. Um, so, you know, and we also do the residential roads with that. So there's a lot of things to figure out going into the future, especially with the city growing and employees and just what we do and just, you know, how many phone calls Matt wants to take or I wanna take or. The biggest thing is we just, we just cleaned our driveway and now you just put more snow in it. Sorry for that, you know, if you just give me a second, but your side roads are going to be the last thing cleaned, unfortunately, so.
So neighbors can help you by keeping their vehicles off the streets?
Y- yes, that would be appreciated.
And then add in trash cans.
And trash cans.
Off the streets, and then when they shovel their driveways, not shovel them into the streets. Probably would help.
That would help, yeah, a little bit. I mean, it, it usually if the street's already clean, they put you back out there, most of it's gonna melt, usually pretty thick, because it's not a whole lot, but.
Patience and understanding.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, I've been to some other cities where when you have ten, twelve inches of snow, you're not getting out of your driveway. You know, you're not getting out to that doctor's visit. You know, you're not getting out to that doctor's visit, so at least if we only leave a row, you know, maybe a foot or two wide, I understand, but you can at least get out from this city to where you need to go. Uh, and county, I think the reason why county, to another, another, to that point, um, when I talk to the county, um, they usually have ten operators for these trucks up here, um, the last few years, they've only been able to hire four. So that kinda puts us at a disadvantage and makes it where these small towns are having to pick up the slack, to be honest with you. Yep.
Thank you, Thomas, I really appreciate you.
I did have another note, I did read this in October, um, we, we went out to Ninety-third Street up north, and, uh, we fixed the culvert and the drain, I guess the trash trucks were getting stuck. I guess over the last few years, the, the Valley Center, uh, buses were getting stuck, I didn't know. Um, the buses since have gone to where if there's not a turnaround, I guess the, the buses won't go down the road anymore. Um, but this was a letter from a resident, and it, it was addressed to the city of Keachai, but it was given to me. Um, it said, "We want to personally thank, thank you for the job on East Ninety-third Street North, especially the road running in front of our house, as well as the neighbors across the street. Uh, we knew the road was bad, but didn't realize how bad it was, from fixing the holes, adding new rock, leveling the road, replacing and repairing our ditch, that always retain water because the trash trucks are getting stuck and making everything worse out here after rain, plus the fact that you came back and added grass, uh, where the yard was under construction." It says, "Your guys, uh, doing this work has been outstanding, deserve a huge thank you." Um, it says, "You have a great group of guys working for the city of Keachai." It says, "We are very pleased that Keachai took us over," so this is the Sunnydale area. So I know, I know that we have some times where I'm like, hey, we're forced, so we do have other people out there that do appreciate. It says, "We sincerely appreciate all you do and a big thank you from the homeowner," so I won't call knocked out, I don't know what their name would be, but. So we do have a good, good, good group of guys and, you know, as much as they, as little as they are, they do get a lock down for.
Thank you so much, Thomas, I appreciate how hard you work to stretch public dollars in serving Keachai and how hard your crew works. Um, is there anything looking forward into twenty twenty-six that you want the council to be aware of regarding the Public Works Department?
Just orders, um, I had a conversation with Matt the other day, and I told him I feel like a dog has been caged. I feel like I'm on a leash and I'm ready to go and put things in and get things going and, you know, know if we're going to run lines and utilities and where they need to go and just, you know, get on the ball and that way I can plan for them instead of them, you know. There was this old saying when I first got here, is the, our job is to put out fires. Well, I don't always like waiting for the fires to, to, you know, to start burning, I like to get ahead of them if I can, so I'm a, I'm definitely a planner versus a spur of the moment type of person, so, you know, whatever that may be, um, we're ready, if it's time to get in, you know, and the more connections we have, the cheaper hits for people in the city, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, um, I have a question, do, we as a city, do we have an emergency road map? You know, that like, it's a priority that we plow if it snows?
No, the emergency snow routes which are marked, which are the main roads.
Okay, I mean, do we have a map that shows like the emergency routes? Okay, I guess that would be another potential request, 'cause that's what comes up, I think, if people wanna see what roads are gonna get plowed. So I don't know if that's something for the future, we wanna consider having an emergency route map that the city can just post and say, just a reminder, these are the priority roads when we have a snow event, but if we don't, okay, thank you. Chief Moore, Keachai Police Department, welcome.
All right, uh, U2's been delivered, uh, it's done well, so, um, we continue to run it. We had a spotlight problem, but that's a both of our issues, so we were able to take over the service and get that fixed and replaced it. So, um, it's out, the guys are appreciating it, uh, and back the first, uh, hundred miles we headed out, we had pursuit. And, uh, it performed just as it needed to and, uh, took a firearm, um, distribution amounts of, uh, meth and, uh, other narcotics off the street, so it served its duty right out the gate. Um, so far, uh, just kinda some highlights in the year, uh, you know, touched on social media a little bit. Right now, we have twenty applications in hand for, uh, open positions, uh, we're filtering through those right now, it's a huge jump after getting only one or two applications in the past at a time, uh, it's the most Keachai PD has had in hand. Uh, and this is after we took down the ten thousand dollar hiring bonus. Ten grand wasn't enough to entice people to come in and apply, however, an active social media has been. Uh, we've got, uh, a way to connect with younger viewers, uh, and that says something when it comes to engagement. Uh, in fact, today I just scheduled another ride along with a, another guy that's gonna come in, I believe it's, uh, next Friday, and, uh, he'll be in the passenger seat with us, seeing what we do and how it goes, so. Uh, speaking on social media platform, um, it's landed us a spot with two schools, uh, to help promote First Responder Week, uh, one of which will be a homeschool coming to Keachai Police Department to take a tour. Um, we're gonna discuss, uh, obviously K-9 operations, everybody loves Rocky, so he'll, uh, he'll be here to do some of that, and, uh, just kinda what we do in and out of the Keachai Police Department. Uh, another one, uh, we'll be taking a grade school, uh, to teach those kids about life as a police department. They have also requested, uh, Rocky coming out, so he's gonna be a, uh, busy dude. Um, Chief and Deputy Chief will be attending Law Enforcement Legislative School, or excuse me, Social in, uh, Topeka on the twenty-seventh. Uh, they all start early, we build meetings and different things, uh, meeting with legislators, uh, talking to our lobbyists, making sure the future of Kansas law enforcement is pure and ethical, so we'll be working on that. Uh, MPO Carpenter and, uh, Deputy Chief Salisbury have completed another evidence audit. Um, so we're, uh, getting that taken care of, we're trying to get space in there right now. As you guys know, one of the highlights of this year is we shut down the CBD shop right on the hills and shutting down the EMT shop, both of which were dealing drugs in your community. Uh, we're on the hat, like I said, your police department has a spine now, and we will go after those who are violating the law, uh, without remorse, without, uh, without apology, that's, that's who you have in this community now, and we're doing it, so. Um, we gotta get that evidence out of there, uh, it's about thirty-six totes, we dropped off ru- right around twenty to thirty pounds marijuana to the forensic science center, uh, we owe them an apology card and probably some cookies, uh, because they have to test each stream, they have to test each container, weigh each container, put the raw product back in the container. Uh, it is a very tedious process, so, um, I'm trying to stay in those, uh, folks' good graces. Um, call volume, no surprise there, that's double from twenty twenty-five. Uh, in twenty-five, we had one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one calls for service. Uh, we are now at three thousand four hundred and sixty-five calls for service, uh, closing it out. That's an increase of one thousand seven hundred and four calls. Again, I wanna reiterate, so there is no confusion, there's no, uh, false information out there, calls for service is everything your police officers do. Uh, it's all inclusive, so from proactive enforcement to responding to number one calls, that's all included. Uh, Officer Bowlin, I'm gonna give him a shout out, he's a standout business and residential, uh, guy, he performed seven hundred and thirty-three checks this year on his own. Uh, that's crime prevention, that's going to businesses, that's going to the houses that are on vacation, that's taking note of everything that's happening in the community, uh, staying on, on par for that. Um, we grant sort of one thousand three business checks and residential checks, uh, Bowlin is our daytime weekend guy, so, you know, he's out there doing that thing. Uh, we're poised for even busier twenty twenty-six, guys, it's, it's just coming. Uh, Gillies up here on the corner, uh, we arrested one of their, um, security officers. Uh, he had over a half pound of marijuana in his car and he was dealing, so, uh, again, it's proxy, it's here. Uh, if it's not set up shop inside the community, it's traveling through the community, and, uh, unapologetically, we will enforce that, we will not hold back. Um, the other shout I wanna give, uh, obviously with the increase of calls and everything, um, or, uh, I like to refer to her as the police office manager, because she does more than just court clerk stuff, but her tasks have doubled, uh, as well. Uh, the other night, we didn't get a court out, we didn't get out here in court until ten-thirty, uh, or sorry, I think it's ten, I don't know if anybody found it or left. Um, I think we saw, uh, I'm on a ballpark, I think it's around a hundred cases, six of them were set for trial, only two of them went to trial, but we're, we're getting busy, we're having to fill up the community room and have court here and break it up alphabetically. But she's taking those phone calls, she's taking payments over the phone, so those cases don't go to court, the tickets and stuff. Um, she's working hard, not to mention that she named dozens of the officers in there every day, she's like our mom, she puts up with us, um, she's a sweetheart. So, uh, you got a re-mail there, I appreciate if you guys wouldn't mind giving her a shout out, uh, she does a lot for us, so. If you guys have any questions?
Um, I just, there's, so on the, the, I, I, I think you may have actually answered this, so the checks that Officer Bowlin did, those are included with the thirty-four thou- thirty-four hundred?
Uh, if you check out on the radio, yes, uh, that's, that's a culmination of, uh, the papers that were received or vacation watches, and then the checks that he had checked out on radio, so likely it's probably more than that, but.
So this, this also would include anytime you have traffic citations or other court cases?
Everything, all productivity of officers.
So do we have any kind of breakdown, just like what is traffic, how many traffic citations we had this year versus last year, or?
So I can get that from the court clerk, uh, or, you know, through, through that. Um, as far as breaking down the calls themselves, uh, Mayor and I had this discussion, uh, sometimes those, uh, those calls will get, uh, misflagged by dispatch. Dispatch will put out a DDC call in progress, and then we look at the call notes and it's a twelve-year-old child refusing to go to school. That's not a DDC call in progress, however, that sounds classified, so if I was to release that information, it wouldn't be a hundred percent accurate.
Okay, I was just curious, 'cause I know that like I said, when you said that's all, everything, that they're not, that some calls might be a, us, I, I stopped somebody for a traffic and violation or versus, like you said, a domestic violence call versus?
I, I've got some, I've got some raw data, I can share, but again, I, I'm concerned with potential accuracy of that. Um, I don't want people to take a look at that and be like, man, we got, you know, so many fights breaking out everywhere, and, and reality, it's a, you know.
Or just, how many of them lead to court cases versus how many of them are just, like I said, we responded to twelve-year-olds, no way, of the twelve-year-olds buying.
Yeah, uh, court's busy, I can, I can get those numbers for you next time, if you want, I'll give Casey and see, uh, see how many court cases we have to go through. I, I have no way to measure that number, so I'm talking.
Those were just, some of the things that several people ask is when they see the thirty-four, the thirty-four sixty-five, and saying, you know, wh- what is going on, what, you know, is it just the traffic stops versus, are we going to call it a half basket?
Uh, my job is to make sure it stays behind the curtain, you know, uh, we don't want y'all worried about exactly what is going on while we're working investigations and trying to, to take down the folks, I want y'all sleeping peacefully at night. Uh, let our guys worry about it, let our guys go out there and handle it, when it is pertinent, when it is important, it does hit Facebook. Uh, when I need to let people know what's on there, so. How many open positions do you have? Uh, with the approval of the new position, uh, this year, I have two. Uh, again, I'm narrowing down the candidacy for the one from last year that was open, rolling in this new year, and then this year we're approved for another one. I wanna fill, uh, the one from last year, make sure we're, we're up and going, and then assess, uh, kinda where we're at in the quarter and kinda, um, what the call volume's doing with the, the surrounding area and what's going on, uh, I know we've got a lot of growth slated, uh, like Thomas said, I don't wanna be fighting a forest fire where we're ahead of it, uh, which is, is gonna be pertinent on that, so.
It's great to hear we have that many out there, it wasn't very long ago that we couldn't get anybody even interested in.
Yeah, when we had ten thousand dollar hiring bonus and nobody even, even batted an eye, you know, again, it's engagement.
Even before that, when we put that into place, it was, couldn't get anything.
Well, we got, we got people pressing ride-alongs now, they wanna come out and, and see if it sparks interest in people who, who are interested in law enforcement. Uh, you know, I've been doing it for twenty-five years professionally, and then, uh, through high school and cadet programs and, and working my way into that, I've got another four years on that, um, I love being that passenger seat, and that's, that's what sparks it, that's what keeps it going, that's what keeps it alive. Let cops be cops, we'll take care of it.
I, I have a couple questions. Um, the police staff directory on the city website is like way outdated. Um, is there plans to get that updated with current officers?
Yes, so, uh, Officer Carpenter is a, uh, well, I said, semi-pro immature photographer. Uh, he has brought his own equipment in, we have American flag in the back office, he's trying to work the line and get some things done, and we get some headshots up. Uh, we wanna put our headshots in the, in the lobby, as well as update the website, I don't have any good website, but, uh, we do wanna get that information on this, emails and contact information.
So will you plan to, um, like in the past, when you've had new officers, like you've done an introduction, like, will, will you do that again on your social media page where you do like an introduction of a new officer, kind of the background? That's, I mean, I remember you did that before.
Yeah, for sure, and, and what we're, uh, trying to do in this new year is, uh, we did a recognition of each officer, just kind of a, uh, a brief on who they are and what they're about, and we're gonna roll through the roster again with that, uh, probably a once-a-week thing, we'll, we'll put it on the face up and just, you know, put that stuff out there, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, now we're gonna welcome Dustin Belton, planning, zoning, stormwater, code enforcement, and IT, welcome.
Thank you. Alright, uh, for zoning, two new one-step final plats were heard by the planning commission, uh, last week, and a table preliminary plat from December was heard by the planning commission in January. Uh, one of the plats, one or two of the plats could be heard by council next month. The preliminary plat is just the okay to go back to, uh, planning commission with a final plat, once they get everything corrected, and it's a big one, uh, so it might take a while before we see that. Um, IT, I did write down nothing to report at this time, that has changed this week. On our website, I posted a, uh, a document saying that the city of Keachai is looking at RFPs for an IT company. Um, it's a matter of comparing what we've got to what is out there, to see if we can get better service or a better deal, things of that nature. Uh, with, uh, Microsoft being down for North America today, Thomas let me know that earlier, um, I was wondering why I wasn't getting emails. Um, I had two RF, or, uh, two people wanting to set up meetings today for this week or next week, and then somebody left a voicemail, that comes in on email, so I didn't get that until six-thirty tonight. Um, so we are doing that. Uh, for stormwater, getting the MS four twenty twenty-five, uh, stormwater report completed, that's due by the end of February, that's going along and everything looks to be okay on that. Um, code enforcement, two items have been brought up in the last couple weeks, emails, phone calls haven't resolved. Those issues without need of further action, I do need to follow up with them just to make sure that they are taken care of.
Council, any comments, questions? Okay, I, I have one, um, the, looking for the new IT service, is that part of what our regular budget already included? With the RFP that's been put out, was that budgeted for twenty twenty-six?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was my only question, so thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
Okay, and finally, city administrator, Jensen for the administration report.
Mayor and Council, in front of you, you have my report, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, um, but I will highlight a couple things. This month, we completed all of our annual reviews for our employees, both our department heads and, um, our administrative staff. We recognize the retirement of Earl Finley from the Public Works Department. He is supposed to no longer be with us, but I think he comes up on a regular basis, he can't stay away. Um, our holiday schedules, uh, resulted in some limited staffing during the last couple months. Um, and this really highlights the volume of, uh, the work that's performed around here, the importance and flexibility of cross-coverage, so, uh, one position knowing what the other position is, and being able to cross-train and cover for one another, uh, so people can be out and on vacation and days off. Of course, we had our, uh, health insurance renewal, technology and communication, Dustin just kinda covered that, uh, what we're looking at. Met with the, uh, business owners on Huffman Drive to come to a resolution for fixing the road affair, we just met again last week. Are getting some additional information from PEC, some new numbers, and we will bring that back to council next month, uh, to let you know what our discussions resulted in from that meeting. But I think we're on a, on a good path, um, we've really, been a lot of, things go on in the past, a lot of promises made, promises not fulfilled, and I think we've got past some of those, and we know that we need to work together to get that road fixed, and I think we're gonna come up with a good solution. Um, meetings I've attended, of course, the Suchet County Association of Cities meeting, uh, monthly local government networking meeting, which is a monthly meeting of city administrators and city managers. We all get together once a month and talk about current issues, uh, issues within our city, uh, issues within the region, throughout the state, sometimes even federally. Met with Park City City Administrator to discuss- Met with Park City City Administrator to discuss current events in our respective cities, different things that are going on. Uh, we try to meet on a regular basis, sometimes that doesn't always work out, but, uh, Park City Administrator and the Delaire City Manager and myself have good working relationships, and we're able to, I get a lot accomplished between the two cities. Uh, submitted a grant to Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the proposed playground pour-and-play surface, we're waiting to hear back on that. Did a follow-up with them yesterday, attended park board meetings, planning commission meetings, and met with numerous citizens, developers, uh, feeling questions about city business. I'll stand for any questions you might have, as to my report.
Council, any questions?
Do you have an update for us on the project on Oliver next jumpstart?
Yeah, we have a pre-construction meeting next Thursday up here at City Hall with the contractors, city engineers, city staff. Uh, and it's just kind of the kickoff year for that, so usually after those pre-construction meetings, or pre-pon meetings, that they call them, then they get to work right after that, so everything's been funded, contracts have been signed, uh, tax certificates have been issued, so they're just waiting to put a shovel in the ground.
Just get that question asked frequently, so if I could have an answer.
Yeah, I think the developer would've wanted to have that well before the first of the year, and that's what he was pushing for, but it didn't work out that way. But the city's been ready, uh, we were just waiting on other people.
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Moreland, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you, have a nice evening.